Treasurer Slavens temporary clerk until the clerk gets here.
Support.
Motion made by trustee Snyderman, supported by trustee Foster. Treasurer Slavens, can you please take roll call?
Trustee Borninski. Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Ganguly.
Good evening.
Supervisor Graham Hoodak.
Good evening.
Clerk Seacrest. Treasurer Slavens, good evening. And trustee Snyderman.
Good evening, I'm here.
Can we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Madam Supervisor, I move we adopt the agenda. Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by trustee Foster. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes on October 11th, 2022?
Madam Supervisor, I move that we approve the minutes from October 11th, 2022.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by trustee Snyderman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Payment of the bills.
Are we doing public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Can I have public comment? Is there anyone here in the room for public comment on agenda items only? I'll also look at the attendees. We have two attendees. If you'd like to make a public comment, please raise your hand. Public comment on agenda items, public comment on agenda items. Anyone in the room? Okay, thank you. Public comments closed.
Madam Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills. Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by trustee Ganguly. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. First item on our agenda is a study session, the 2023 Budget Adjustment Budget Final Review, and it's going to be presented by Director Trumbull. So I think you're okay, right? Do I need to share?
I am, I would like to share. Let me see if I can. I need to, I need permission.
I think she should be able to. Thank you.
Thank you guys for coming to the study session. What we're going to talk about tonight is a little bit different than we've done in years past. Similar but different. We are going to go over the 2023 budget changes since the board saw the 23 budget a year ago in November. Typically, this time of year, we go over the changes that, since you've seen it, and then we're also presenting the budget for two years out, so the 24 budget. Right now, we're holding off on presenting that budget until February is the timeframe we're looking at. As we're in the process of the priority-based budgeting system, we're trying to incorporate that into the 24 budget that is presented to the board. So right now, what we're doing is showing the 23 budget changes. We have timelines, timeframes that the state requires us to present that by and adopt the budget by. So we want to make sure that gets done, and we're following the state law. So what we're going to do is really just go over the changes from when the board saw this a year ago. We went over this in detail. There are a few changes. We sent out some information to the board on Friday. We're not going to go over that in detail as presented to you on, sent to you on Friday. That's what we'll go over a little bit more at the public hearing. But this is a graphic presentation, if you will, of what was sent to the board. So happy to answer any questions on what was sent if you got a chance to look at that. But we're going to go over the changes. If you have any questions for the different departments, the directors can answer their own budget changes. But with that, we're just going to get going and get right into it. I wanted to remind the board that the 23 budget assumptions are as follows. The property taxes were based on inflation of 3.3%. That is set from a year ago, the year ended September 30th of 2021. Obviously, the large inflation that's happening this year will impact the 24 budget, not the 23 budget. And then the tax growth for the new properties is estimated to be about 3.6%. So overall, we're actually expecting the property taxes in the township to grow by almost 6% during 2023. State shared revenue is based on the state's estimation, and what's odd is the state's estimating the revenue sharing actually to go down a little bit from last year. I'm not quite sure why, but that's what they have on their website. It's also going down because we, in '22, we got our large census adjustment of about $1 million. So it's going down by about $1.2 million from 2022 into 2023, based on the state's estimates. So that's what we use for that. Then our other revenues are based on prior years and just kind of estimations of the future permits and where we, where we actually expect the revenues to be for the township. On the expenditure assumptions for 2023, currently, there's no request for additional headcount, different than what the board has already approved in 2022. We have assumed a 2% full-time wage increase. That's what we had last year in there. Unless the contracts had something different, we have a 2% wage increase built into the budget. We have the pension cost increasing by an average of about 10%, the medical and prescription costs of about 12%, and then prefunding for about $1 million. We've been doing that every year. Based on where we're coming in with our medical costs, HR was helpful in providing that information. So people costs, benefits costs are really our largest ongoing costs. So we use the help of our outside insurance companies to help with those, establish those rates, and also looking at the pension, what comes in from MERS. So looking at the primary differences, I know this is probably hard to see. The general fund, initially when we presented this to the board, the general fund was projecting to use fund balance of just shy of $3.3 million. What we're asking for, what we will be asking the board to approve is a budget use of $4.2 million. So that's increasing the use of fund balance by about $1 million. I'm going to get into a little bit more specifics on what that represents on the next slide, but that's out of the general fund. The fire fund initially was going to add to fund balance of about half a million dollars, $540,000, and now we're looking at about $447,000. So still adding to fund balance, just not quite as much. And that's pretty much the direct result of an increase of the fire inspector that the board had approved back in February. The police fund is projecting to use more fund balance. It was budgeting to use 1.2 million. Now we're looking at 1.6 million. That's primarily the result of the three new police officers the board approved and the one new deputy chief at the time. But you know, we know that's going to be a captain now at this, at this point. Cable TV fund is looking to use a little bit more fund balance than they had before. That difference is about $37,000. That's the result of increasing for capital purchases for a van. They're using the peg fees that the, we are required to spend for cable on peg or on cable capital. So that's coming right out of those peg fees. The community improvement fund, we're looking to spend about $1 million of fund balance. We earmarked half a million dollars, if you recall, out of community improvement for the ARPA, the sidewalk gap funding. And we also put aside half a million dollars for the Cherry Hill funding out of the ARPA monies as well. The board ultimately approved about $4 million using the ARPA funds for that, but we're just earmarking right now half a million dollars just to have some money set aside for the initial planning. That whole project will come before the board at a future date. 911 service fund, we're asking to use about $12,000 more fund balance. That is a direct result of the dispatch consoles from the renovations, some new console services they need. Golf course fund, asking to use fund balance of about $8,000. It's just a net difference between they increased the revenues and increased the expenses. So just a minor shift there. Water and sewer fund, about $121,000 difference, looking to use fund balance, and that's a result of some additional capital. And then the fleet maintenance fund, about $44,000, using more fund balance of that for equipment hoist, a large vehicle hoist that needs to be replaced. And looking at the general fund that I said I'd get into a little bit more, if you look at the very bottom of this page, that $987,000 increased use of fund balance, that is, that is made up of everything on the sheet. So the board had previously approved, if you go all the way back up to the top, about $865,000 of previously approved board goal items. So this, this is a result of all of the various items that the board goals had identified before. So increasing some of the facilities, maintenance staff, the park staff, the various, numerous staff. These are all items that the board had previously, previously approved in the past. I don't have all the listings. But the new funding requests are after that. So leisure services, additional funding requests total $236,000. The largest of that is a result of the increase in the subsidy for the community center fund of $156,000. Director Holmberger could get into more of those if you have specific questions on those. The MSD additional funding requests are $147,000. Facilities maintenance is the largest piece of that. Director Smith could get into that more if there's more questions. The IT additional funding requests are about $236,000. The finance additional funding request of $50,000. That is one of the org assessment goals that came through. They wanted, they were suggesting that the finance department apply for the budget award from the GFOA budget award, and this is software that can help us compile all the necessary data. Those budget award books are four to 500-page documents, and it has a lot of documentation that's needed in there, and we don't want to have to recreate the wheel. So if we move forward, that would be an item that we would come to the board to request the funding for or request the actual purchase of, but we're asking the board to put that in the budget right now. So we earmarked that money for that. The supervisors' additional funding requests total $54,000. But that's really made up of not just the supervisor's office, but the other departments that report to the supervisors. The supervisor is asking for $22,000. The biggest chunk of that is continuing part-time staff person that was not initially in the budget. The assessors' office has some, about $20,000 for some printing and some new equipment. Communication of $4,000. Human resources asked for $3,500 for a printer. And then the township board, we have $2,000 in there for additional trainings. The treasurer's department put in additional funding of $2,000 for printing and mailing for their bills. The emergency manager department within the general fund asked for additional $8,000. And the last two items are general expenses of a court subsidy of $400,000. The 35th district court is starting to get to the point where they are no longer operating in the black. They are operating in the red, which means we, as the communities, as a funding unit for them, would be required to fund any subsidy to keep them out of a deficit. So they are projecting at this point Canton Township's portion to be about $400,000 that we would have to subsidize them. So that's new to us, and it's possible that that's coming in '22 as well. We're waiting to hear from the court on what that looks like for '22. So you might see another amendment in '22 to fund this year's deficit for the court. Lastly, the good news, this is going the way we would like it to go. The general revenues, although I said the state shared revenue is going down from where it was in '22 into '23, it's, was still underbudgeted from what we initially put into the budget. So we added about $1 million for the budget increase for the state shared revenue compared to what we had initially put in the budget. And then the $12,000 is a minor contribution from some of the other funding units for a grant that we have taken on, and other communities are helping to pay for that, reimburse us for that. I know I went over a bunch of stuff. Quickly, I'm going to pause for a moment to see if any of the trustees have questions for any of the directors on their requests.
For you, actually. Just so I understand, because the difference is 987. The stuff previously approved by the board, that's stuff that was approved this year after 2022 started, right? So we had, we have already had made adjustments or made changes that caused 864,000, the number at the very top, right?
Correct.
Okay, and these are things that in addition, or since then, are being asked for, which only adds a little bit more, like $100,000 more, basically, for a total of 987 against the 2023 budget. Okay.
Correct. After you net the $1 million.
Yeah, after you, the $1 million saves us, right?
Correct, correct. That got us there. Correct, that's exactly right.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Any other questions before I move on?
So on the expenses side, are you factoring in the inflation that's happening right now? Or is it based on the 2021 numbers? Because, you know, you based your revenue, the tax, and based on inflation. Do you also, are you also basing your expenditure on the inflation costs?
Expenditures are based on what the departments have requested. Some of these increases in the budget are due to inflationary. You know, increases that the departments are anticipating impacting their operations. But is the finance department did not build any additional inflationary increases if the department did not request them? We put in what the department's requested increases were in here. Some, some things that were requested by the departments were vetted by the supervisor's office, and there were some tweaks made. So the, the actual requests were higher. It went to the supervisor's office and discussed with the departments. And this was what was agreed on by the supervisor to, to put in the budget that was being brought forth to the trustees.
Right, and a lot of those lines. So what you're going to see is the different directors, if they have, they had some additional items, they're going to bring them forward to the board like in a presentation to explain them versus just line items. That'll be, that'll be done in the future.
I was just talking about the inflation part. You know, I understand those are line items. So you're, so what Wendy is telling me is everybody has, all the departments on their own might have, might or might not have include the inflation costs in there. Okay.
Correct. There's a number of departments, you know, for example, the finance department. We don't have a lot of expenses within the finance that would do that. We were tied into contracts that, you know, were tied into for five years, so we didn't have to make adjustments. But there are other departments that have, you know, more repair and maintenance, and they're seeing, you know, because of the fuel costs are going up, that's impacting their departments more. So it really depended on the departments. We're relying on the departments to look through their budgets and understand, you know, what their needs are.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on, the 2023 capital projects. And these capital projects that are listed here are not part of the big CIP bond that we're talking about. These are individual equipment-type purchases that departments need. The only things that I'm going to highlight here are the items highlighted in green. Those are the new changes since initially, this initially was presented to the board. So, and these have been worked into the budget as well, the, the numbers that I just previously went over. And Fascent Run, there's a pond treatment system for $30,000 that Leisure Services is asking to be included in the 2023. That was actually in the 2022 budget and deferred. So that is, that needs to be completed. The assessors' department has requested additional monitors, new monitors and dual monitors. We do provide the equipment for the assessor, so that has been worked into the budget for '23. And then the HR department needs a new ID card printer, which I think is where all the badges come from for, for all the new staff. So pretty minor there. On the, some additional items, vehicles. I think it hasn't been a secret, and you'll see at one of the RBAs later today as far as vehicles. The cost of vehicles are going up. We can't get some of the vehicles, and, and we're in desperate need of some. So there's a couple of building inspector vehicles in, in the budget that's been worked in since then. The cable, I spoke to this briefly when I was going through the changes of the cable fund. The replacement van for cable is $60,000, and there's a cart that's being requested in there as well. Facilities maintenance, a couple of vehicles there. There's an F-150 for $38,000 and a transit of $51,000. Basically, and then there's this contingency of, you know, $9,800. Those vehicles are in there at the quoted prices, but we're anticipating that there's a potential they're going to come in actually higher. That's, you know, Director Smith is probably going to speak to this a little bit later as part of his RBA, but they're asking for just enough cushion as we're seeing costs actually coming in higher than a lot of the quotes that we are receiving. And they are not guaranteeing their prices at this point in time, the dealerships are not. The summit has requested just an increase to the fitness equipment lease. Some of the equipment was deferred from the shutdown when we were, during COVID. Typically, every year, the summit replaces a number of pieces of equipment to just kind of rotate it almost on its own lease, if you will, for $48,000. Some was deferred, and the prices are going up. So they asked for an increase in that from $48,000 to $65,000. And then the ITI department is requesting some new chairs and I think a number of their offices in the IT training room. The public safety, actually, there's only, the only change was the fire department decreasing the computer and equipment purchases. The modem upgrades for the fire trucks that were budgeted in '23 ended up getting moved up to '22. So we're taking that out of the '23 budget. Any questions on those capital changes? Okay. So I wanted to touch a little bit on the CIP plan. So we're continuing to move forward. The capital that we didn't talk about is the CIP plan, which was that big, you know, $13 million bond that we issued, and we're continuing to work through some of those capital items. Those projects, as the board is aware, and I believe we spoke about this in August, maybe at a, at a study session or during a board meeting, those costs are significantly exceeding the original price that was put into the five-year plan. So we're working on a plan to bring forth to the board at a future study session to talk about potential additional funding needs as a result of that. The paving projects are significantly over budget, and a lot of the project's scope has been expanded. So we're going to bring a study, bring some information to a future study session, hopefully in the next month or two, to talk about, to talk about that funding and get the board caught up on kind of where we are with that CIP plan. With that being said, we are continuing on expanding that plan. We need to update our five-year plan through 2027. So we will also be bringing that to the board at a future date, hopefully before the 2024 budget comes to the board, is our, is our goal. We've reached out to all the departments and have gotten the department input. We don't anticipate the capital plan to be nearly as significant as, you know, the last five years because the last five-year plan included capital that was deferred from the last recession in the late 2000s. So hopefully, it'll be a lot more manageable, you know, to work within our current budgets. But we'll be bringing that forth at a future date as well. Any question on the capital? Okay, this next slide, and I'm not going to go over this in a lot of detail. I really just want to highlight one thing that, that, one big thing that will stick out here. In the general fund, you can see the budgeted revenue in '22. So this is actually, look at the slide, it's the actual revenues from 1920 and '21. It's our budgeted revenue for '22, and then the proposed revenue for '23. And '22, you can see the general fund had budgeted revenue of $41.8 million, and that's going down to $33.2 in '23. That's a direct result of the ARPA dollars that we got that we will be recognizing in revenue in '22 of about $7.5 million. And again, that additional one-time census adjustment for revenue sharing of $1 million that we will not get in '23. So it's not really, we had a one-time increase influx of, of cash, which obviously you can see from that trend that from 19 through '21, it was, you know, staying around $30 million, and then it jumped up in '22. And now we're kind of back down to where we had been for that, for that revenue. Otherwise, the only changes in here are the same changes we discussed, as far as the changes go. The expenditures, the same thing. If you look at general fund, we've been $27 to $25,000, $25 million, excuse me. We jumped up in '22 to $45 million. Again, that's the ARPA dollars and how we're treating the ARPA dollars. And we're taking that back down to $37 million for 2023. Again, the changes we've already spoken about, this is just what it kind of looks like on the expense side of things. Looking at the fund balance, as you can see at the end of this, if, actually, if we start with the proposed fund balance, if you will, for 2022, it's the third column in there, that's where the fund balance would be if our budgets come in as, fund balance comes in as budgeted, which is always conservative. So I actually expect our fund balance to be a little bit higher than that. But if we put the revenues that were shown a couple of slides ago, plus the expenditures shown a couple of slides ago, we can see our ending fund balance for '23 for the general fund would be about $20.8 million. And it goes, you know, down all the way. The roads fund would be $2.8 million, fire fund, $4.8, police fund, $6.7 million, and so on and so forth. You can see where that goes. The board established policy is to have a fund balance of 15%. We definitely exceed that fund balance of 15%. So with this budget, the township will remain in positive and a healthy financial situation for, for 2023. Lastly, what I wanted to show, and when I have blue and yellow on a slide during Michigan-Michigan State League, I do not know, should have kept with green and white, but guess I'll throw them a bone a little bit. What I wanted to show here was this is the five-year projection that we spoke about in January when we came to the board with the, trying to look at ways to fund the board goals and, you know, all the ARPA funding. I want to make sure you, that points out on here that 2021 is the actual amount of net income that we had. '22 through '26 is actually what I had projected at that point in time. I haven't had an opportunity to project that out yet to see where we're actually going to end up in any of these years. But if you look at all of these funding requests, we have worked every single one of these items of these board goals into the budget except the highlighted items that are still, will still be forthcoming. We're still looking at the software upgrade for the permits, forms and fees. We're trying to incorporate that into whatever our new ERP system is, which is still on here, the $1 million. And then there was a potential assistant corporation council position that is still on hold at this point in time as to whether we continue to move forward with that position. So the, you know, the fabulous news is that all of the items that the board has brought forth have either been funded or are close to being funded, and we're still in a really healthy financial situation. So, so that's really positive news out of this. And I guess the very last thing I wanted to talk about is the next steps on the budget. So we're planning on having the public hearing to adopt the budget on November 22nd. So unless there are changes as a result of tonight's meeting, what we presented tonight will be what we bring forth for the board to adopt in November. As I stated earlier, we're working on the 2024 budget. Right now, it's open to the departments for their entry. So we're hoping, we're hoping to bring that to the board in February of '23. And I also wanted to give you a brief status update of priority-based budgeting, which was one of the board goals as well. We have had some, you know, the departments have done a lot of work on it. It was a big project, a lot of work, a lot of time and effort has gone in by, you know, numerous departments. This is a big team effort, and I appreciate everybody's, all the departments who have put their time and effort into it. We have gotten to a point where all of our programs have been put in by the departments. We have costed all those programs by the departments. They have been scored against certain criteria such, including the board goals is a criteria that it gets weighted against. And other things such as, is it a federal or state requirement? Is it a board requirement? What percentage of the population is benefiting from these programs? Does it, does it have 100% cost recovery? So there's various things that it gets scored against. We are now at the phase, so the department scored their programs, and then there's a peer review. So people from outside the department also looked at those scores just to kind of validate, you know, that everybody's on the same page with where these programs rank as far as being aligned with the township's goals or not aligned with the township's goals. There's a training that we have on Thursday, the next steps for the priority-based budgeting, that talk about how do we look at these scores now and what does that tell us as department users? So we're going to give the departments an opportunity to go through this training, double-check everything, make sure they're looking at things to say, oh my gosh, I don't know if I costed this program, right? There's no way that this program costs this much money. We want to take a look at that before we present this, you know, to the, to the trustees and to the board. Because if there are changes, we want to make sure we have time to address those before, before it comes out. So our goal is really to look at this and present this information in a program format with the 24 budget in February. So, so then we, not only will have the budget in a format that makes sense to the finance department and under state law, because under state law... department, and under state law, because under state law, we have to adopt the budget a certain way, but we can also show the public and people who might be interested in understanding really, what does, what do these numbers and these line items in a budget tell us, and how is that funding different programs in the township? So we're hoping to do that when we roll out the '24 budget in February. Phew, that was a lot. So any questions? Happy to answer any questions? I'm sure the directors are happy to answer any questions you might have for their items.
Anya?
Yeah, first of all, thank you so much, Wendy and everybody else who put together. I just have a question on the community improvement fund, two slides ago. So I see there's like a huge increase in income on that.
Right here? Oh, the income, are you looking at the revenue one? Right here, this $10 million?
Yeah, and then, yeah, so is that because of ARPA or?
So it is. So if you recall, to ensure that we didn't lose any of the ARPA funding, we had decided the best way to use that, to make sure we got it, is to use it on our existing payroll and then set it aside, then the savings from the payroll is going to be used to fund the various projects that the board had identified, the sidewalk gaps, the, you know.
Okay, so that's, that's what the community improvement fund is.
Right, so we, so we brought it into the general fund, you know, as we've paid that payroll, and then there's an expense in the general fund to move it to the community improvement fund, to get it out of the general fund now to earmark it for the board goals. So it, so it's inflated almost, because you've got the revenue in two different funds, but you also have the expense in the general fund of it transferring back out to the, to the community improvement fund.
So I had another, like, I have a question on the priority-based budgeting that you guys are doing. Is that for, it was presented in February, is that for the, starting from next year? Is that what we are doing, the priority-based budgeting?
Yeah, we have not been trained yet exactly on how that, the software can be used as far as initiating the budget. We know that we are required under state law to adopt a budget a certain way on an account, like, account-by-account basis. We have to be able to upload our budgets to the state, and we can't do that through just the priority-based budgeting software. So we still have to prepare our budget the way we have, and then we're going to be exporting it into this new software. But we're not quite sure how that works yet. We haven't been trained on that part. So the goal is to at least have step one, so you can see it, all the programs using the '24 data, to see what kind of programs and how much they cost, and where they align with the, with the board's goals, with the '24 budget that will be shown in February.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't have a question, but thank you for the presentation, and it was good to see that our board goals were absorbed in the budget. That was good to see, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you, and um.
And I would be remiss if I didn't thank Carolyn Cox, because she does, I know she's, she's very uncomfortable with the accolades, but we couldn't get through this without her. She puts a lot of time and effort into it, so we appreciate Carolyn, and I'll end on making her feel uncomfortable.
No standing ovation?
Oh, we could do that.
Carolyn and Wendy, thank you. And so more to come on this, like you said. So we're looking at the next one, November 22nd, to have the public hearing. And as you said, also with the CIP plan, you know, costs are going up. Fuel costs are affecting some of the items also. Okay, all right, thank you, thank you, good job. So we can flow with the next item, our recognition, because our receipt, Thomas Paden and team are not here yet, so we can wait on that one. So our next item on the agenda is the consent calendar.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board approve the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, consider approval of payment of the annual software license fees to Kereworks for the Onbase Document Management System. C2, consider increasing a blanket purchase order from Municipal Services. C3, consider a second reading of the amendment to Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances regarding Harvest Creek rezoning. C4, consider request to increase blanket purchase order for Rico USA Incorporated. C5, consider second reading of an amendment to Chapter 46 of the Canton Township Code of Ordinances Regarding the Youth Tobacco Act of 167 of 2022. And then C6, request budget amendments to the 2022 capital improvement plan.
Question made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Next item is our general calendar. Item G1, consider preliminary plan development district for Creekview Landings.
Supervisor, I move that the board approve the resolution as presented. Approval of the preliminary plan development district for Creekview Landings, whereas project sponsor has requested preliminary approval of a planned development district for Creekview Landings located north of Geddes Road and west of Denton, and where its planning commission reviewed the preliminary plan development, plan at plan development agreement, voted eight to zero to recommend approval of the request with conditions as the request meets the criteria for a plan development and results in definite benefits to the community. Now therefore be it resolved. Board trustees of the Charge of Township of Canton, Michigan, does hereby approve the Creekview Landing Preliminary Plan Development District on the subject tax parcels, as provided in the plan development agreement and plan documents, subject to the following conditions. One, the plans show the improvements noted in the TIS to the satisfaction of Canton Township's Engineering Services Division and Wayne County. Two, the minimum front yard setback separation distance between the sidewalk and the front of the garage be at least 22 feet. Three, that units 172 through 229 be designed with at least 50% brick. Four, that the plans and PD agreement must include a complete schedule of regulations and modifications. Five, the applicant starts the process of obtaining easements from owners on Geddes Road and Denton Road where sidewalk gaps will be created as a result of the project, and that the applicant provide information on whether sidewalk construction is feasible within the existing right-of-way on each parcel where there will be a sidewalk gap. Six, that the gravel trail be shown at least 10 feet wide. Seven, a tree survey landscape plan and draft prairie restoration and management plan be provided prior to final PDD review. Eight, that minor changes and corrections be made to the PD plan and PD agreement as noted by staff. Nine, in the event that the model of the development changes from a single-family rental development to an ownership model, that any amendments to the PDD must come to the planning commission and township board for review. Ten, sidewalks are to be installed on both sides of all streets within the development.
Question made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Trustee Snyderman. The applicant proposes to develop 449 single-family for residential units on the approximately 224.6 acres located north of Geddes Road and west of Denton Road. Of the 449 units, 170 units will be attached, and the remaining 342 units will be detached. One entrance is proposed on Denton Road, located approximately 750 feet north of Geddes Road, and two entrances are proposed on Geddes Road. The eastern entrance on Geddes Road, located about a half mile from Denton Road, aligns with Bar Road, and the western entrance is near the far west side of the site. Each planned development district is required to demonstrate definite benefits to the community pursuant to Section 27.04 of the zoning ordinance. The project sponsors proposes the following definite benefits. Connection and extension of the regional pass system from the Hamlet to Geddes Road over to the west township boundary, which consists of one connection in the northwest part of the site and one connection in the northeast part of the site near the pond. Preservation of many wooded areas enhanced with a pathway through the woods and connection to the pass system. 61% of the site is open space or 140.56 acres, which exceeds a 25% minimum open space required in a PD. Active recreational amenities, including a pool, a dog park, splash pad, basketball court, and playground, lighting and other architectural design elements within the project, completion and enhancement of the regional pond and existing wetlands adjacent to the pond, meeting a need for different types of rental product and providing another housing opportunity within the community. 25% of the proposed development is aimed at empty nesters, which would make traffic generation slightly lower than a standard R2, single-family detached development. Connection to adjacent water main systems to the north and south to complete a loop, thus improving redundancy and pressures in the community water system, and constructing sidewalks along the Geddes Road and Denton Road, including gap parcels. At its meeting on September 12th, 2022, the planning commission recommended approval of the preliminary PDD with conditions. If the preliminary PDD is approved by the Township Board of Trustees, the next step will be for the applicant to prepare, prepare a final PD plan application and address the conditions of preliminary PDD approval. Director Smith, do you want to add anything, yourself or Patrick?
I have nothing else to add. I know Patrick's here, and I know the applicant is here as well.
Applicant want to add anything?
No, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Summer, do you want to add anything from the planning commission?
I'll just note that a few planning commissioners and I think a couple of residents were concerned about traffic around the site and some of the speed around the site. So I know some of that is addressed in the traffic study, but just wanted to note it came up during the meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any questions from the board or comments? Steven?
Jade, can we bring up on the screen the package on this one? Anyone do it, I guess? Yeah, okay. So I, a couple of questions. This one's an interesting project, because it's rentals, and there's some detached and some attached, I believe, right? So it looks kind of unique, and I'm, I'm digging that, I like that. But I do have some questions, so, and can you promote Patrick's, or have you already?
Patrick is right to you.
Yeah, he's right here.
Oh.
I can do you one better.
He was both, I know. I just snapped my fingers and there he was.
How did you do that? So, and I also like the comments, and I don't know if that came out of planning, about the sidewalks along Geddes and along Denton. I'm assuming it doesn't go all the way to Ridge, right? So, no, so. So you're going to be putting in sidewalks on the areas that are adjacent to those roads, that the subdivision is adjacent, right? So all of those will have, and then you're going to go after the gaps in between those?
That, that's correct, and the applicant can speak to that in more detail, but definitely the adjacent parts of their properties that are adjacent to Geddes Road and Denton Road, they are proposing sidewalks along their frontages. And then as part of their definite benefit, they will be trying to acquire the necessary easements on the gap parcels that they don't own to try to obtain easements, and they've submitted language to include in the PD agreement where they would construct the sidewalk or come to some mutually agreeable reimbursement to the township to do the gaps. So the language is fairly general at this point with the preliminary PDD, but they, they've made that commitment in the agreement and, in writing to staff.
Okay, that's great. Also, I noticed that, so the buildings are kind of grouped together. It is R2, but I doubt anybody has a half acre. Any individual building has that size. And so, but that, I guess, leaves for a lot of the forestation to remain. I was, I was going to bring up the Google Maps here to see what was, what was, what is there today. But is that true?
Yes. When they've, when the applicants had submitted the plan and looked at the design concept, what we had suggested to them is to cluster the units as close as possible to the maximum extent feasible, so that the balance of that would be preserved as open space. So if these were half-acre lots, theoretically, there would be no open space. So what we wanted to see is some clustering that preserved not only the woodland area in the northwest corner, but there's also some creeks and drains that run through the property, and those are wooded along those features, to try to back off those as much as possible, and then for some of the open space areas, that will just be left unfarmed to do something with, and the applicants have suggested, or they've included on the plan, prairie restoration in those areas. So a lot of natural features benefits proposed.
Thank you, that's great. Two more questions. So the traffic that trustee Foster mentioned, I did read the traffic study. It was quite in-depth, and, but it also mentions that it was taken during the time of the pandemic, and so some of the numbers, I think, were utilized from a previous traffic study? Is that correct?
Correct. In the last couple of years, obtaining current traffic study data has been very difficult with the pandemic, and then in the wake of the pandemic, with more people working from home, it's, it's harder to peg a current traffic count based on the pre-pandemic levels. And so our traffic engineering consultant has worked with applicants and our engineering division to try to find ways where we can accurately model that. In some cases, there were traffic studies nearby that were done prior to the pandemic. For example, Grandview Estates in Grandview South, is south of Geddes Road, we've, we've got traffic data from their traffic study that was pre-pandemic. When there are other ones in the area, oftentimes, we give those to applicants to let them know these are the studies, and then they can model off of those if they can't get current counts that reflect the increases that would have been expected at that time, had we not had the pandemic. And so our traffic engineering consultant with Wade Trim works closely with applicants to try to make sure those models are accurate and reflect what impact the development will have on the road system.
So what do you see happening with that intersection? Will it be expanded based on this single development coming in? And who, will the applicant be responsible for a part of it, and the county be responsible for a part of it?
The traffic study, it does show there are intersection improvements, mostly with dedicated turn lanes, as well as intersection improvements at the development, at their points of adjacent to Denton Road and Geddes Road. And so some of those are, are turn lanes or passing lanes dedicated for the development or to go around the development. And those were improvements that were noted in their traffic study, that their traffic engineering consultant noted that those were improvements that would have to take place to maintain the level of service in the road with that development. And so the township's traffic engineering consultant at Wade Trim had reviewed the traffic study and was in agreement with their methodology and their proposed improvements. At the end of the day, Geddes Road and Denton Road are county roads, so the county will have to review the traffic study, accept the results, and then if the county accepts the results and the proposed improvements to the road system, then I believe the county would have the applicant make those improvements or pay for the improvements. And I think that would be part of the overall county permitting process.
Last question. So I noticed in the northwest corner of this development, it comes very close to the Hamlet. And I was wondering, is there some kind of, not necessarily road or automobile connection to the Hamlet, but is there a way to connect through a path, a paved path or something like that, the two communities, so that they can, that residents can bicycle or walk or whatever, not just in their own communities, but in both communities? It was hard for me to see if, I do see some gaps and things like that between buildings in both communities, but it didn't look like there was, and could that be added if not?
Yeah, in the far northwest corner, there is a trail stub in Hamlet to the north, and the applicants are proposing a gravel nature trail to connect up in that far northwest corner to the Hamlet Trail.
Oh, really?
And then come into their development, and that, that, that trail will come into the development and then intersect with those sidewalks in the northwest.
Right.
And then while we're up in the northwest, those are the units that were called out in the, in the description, where these units in the northwest would have 50% brick, because they would be consistent with the architecture, or at least the brick percentage of the Hamlets where they're adjacent to.
Okay, so it's like, from the trail goes from the northernmost units of that circle up there over to the Hamlet into their trails?
What they would do is, up in the northwest, northwest of that loop, there's a trail, and that goes to the very northwest corner of the site. So if somebody wants to get on the trail, they would have to go from the sidewalk and then connect to that trail, and then go up to the Hamlets. And then if we go the south side of that loop towards the west side, there's a gravel trail that will go into that wooded area. Once, we think at, at final PD, we'll probably have some more information there in terms of the impactfulness of taking a trail through that woodland, because there are some wetlands in there. So if there's a way to do a trail through there, that's the least invasive possible.
Okay, yeah, I see like, on page 64 of the packet, I see a trail that comes from the upper left and goes in from the very corner into that circle up top, and then another trail from the bottom of that circle to the lower east, southwest circle of homes. So I think that's what you're talking about.
That's correct.
Yep, okay. All right, cool, thank you.
Other questions? Anya?
So, so who is going to rent it? Is it some, the people who are building it? Like, are they going to be the renters? Like, not, I mean, the people who will, the landlords?
That's correct. The applicant can speak more to their business model, but as they propose that there will be one company that owns the entire development. So instead of having several landlords and several units, it's one landlord with several units. So it will be one company that rents all of the units out. So one landlord that we'll be dealing with, or that we'll be dealing with on the application and then going forward with the development.
So I saw a couple of comments on the, public comments on the planning commission about, you know, they're going to be, it's going to be higher, like, you know, they're going to be, it is going to be more mud put in more high level, and there's a chance of flooding for the neighborhood plots. Someone had concerns, a couple of people had concerns about it. So I was just wondering if, you know, if you're taking, if that is taken into consideration right now or in the future about, you know, flooding that, because there's, I think there's a lot of wetland too in this area, so.
That's correct. That is a comment that we'll carry forward. At this point of preliminary plan development review, there aren't topography, there aren't topographic lines and final elevations that are shown on the plans. The plans here are a little bit more two dimensional. But going forward, the site will have to retain its stormwater. And if they get into final plan development and site plan review, they'll have to have the topography of the site, including the finished topography where they show the elevations of not just their site but adjacent neighbors, and how they can keep their stormwater on their site and prevent it from running offsite. So that's something our engineering division looks closely at as well as Wayne County.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion passes. Thank you. I missed your board was going to come also, is that correct? We still waiting for a few more people? Just you? Okay, don't worry. All right. Why don't we do the resolution then? Go back, going back to, "Resolution for the Chamber of Commerce's 50th Anniversary." So we all signed this, and it's saying, "Resolution to the Board of Trustees, a Charter of Township of Canton, in recognition of the Canton Chamber of Commerce 50th Anniversary. Whereas the mission of the Canton Chamber of Commerce is to provide enhanced business growth and professional development opportunities to its members by building a strong network of diverse locally-based businesses, offering quality networking and business education seminars to its members, and acting as a business resource for its members in the community. Whereas the Canton Chamber of Commerce was established in 1972 and is a nonprofit corporation of voluntary membership that invests time and money to carry forward programs relevant to members' needs. Whereas for the last 50 years, the Canton Chamber has partnered with local professionals to cultivate a network design to bolster our economy, provide business with a way to make vital connections, all while improving the overall community and quality of life for our citizens. Whereas the Canton Chamber of Commerce hosts a variety of events, programs, and educational seminars that cater to business owners, professionals seeking employment opportunities, and the entire Canton Township community. Whereas the Chamber recently celebrated their 50th anniversary at a black tie gala at the Henry Ford Museum with 250 in attendance, now therefore be it resolved that the Canton Township Board of Trustees congratulate the Canton Chamber of Commerce on 50 years of helping our local business community thrive. We appreciate the Chamber's partnership and dedication to Canton." Want to come up? Does anybody want to come up for a picture?
Okay. So I will second that.
Thank you. Seconded by trustee Foster. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion passes. Thank you. Congratulations. It was a very good event that you had also. There are a lot of people there, very happy. All right, next item on the agenda is G2, Consider Special Land Use Amendment to Expand Religious Institution Land Use for St. Thomas Abeka and Consider Site Plan Amendment to Construct Accessory Building.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution, the approval of Special Land Use and Site Plan Amendment for St. Thomas Abeka Catholic Church, whereas project sponsor has requested special land use approval for expansion of the religious land use parcel, on the subject tax parcel, and site plan approval for an accessory building, sculpture garden, worship garden with seating and associated structures and landscaping on the subject tax parcels at 555 South Lily Road and 713 South Lily Road. And whereas the Planning Commission reviewed the request and applicable criteria, voted eight to zero to recommend approval with conditions as the request meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance, including the criteria of special land use approval in section 27.03, subsection C of the zoning ordinance. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees, the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, does hereby approve special land use in planning application for the proposed expansion of the religious land use parcel numbers 089990013702, and approval of the site plan amendment and planning, and the other planning application on the subject tax parcels for the accessory building, sculpture garden, worship garden with seating and associated structures and landscaping, subject to all state, county, and township requirements.
Question made by Clerk Seager, supported by Treasurer Slavens. St. Thomas Abeka Catholic Church is a religious institution land use located on the east side of South Lily Road, south of Cherry Hill Road. Religious land uses are special land uses and the RF4 Single Family Residential Zoning District in St. Thomas Abeka previously obtained special land use approval on the site at 555 South Lily Road, parcel is listed. St. Thomas Abeka proposes the following two phases of the same project. First, addition of an accessory building on the existing church site at 555 South Lily, parcel is listed, located in the southeast corner of the existing parking lot. Proposed accessory building is approximately 24 feet by 32 feet. Number two, expansion of the religious land use onto the parcel to the south, parcel is listed, which requires a special land use permit for the expansion of religious land use. This portion of the project includes construction of a sculpture garden, construction of a worship garden with seating and landscaping. Additionally, the entry to this garden area will result in the removal of four parking spaces on the north, parcel is listed. At its meeting on October 3, 2022, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommended approval of a special land use and site plan amendment subject to conditions. The applicant has since revised the plans to meet the conditions. If the special land use is approved, the next step will be for the applicant to submit plans to the Building and Inspection Services Division for review prior to any construction. Director Smith, do you want to add anything?
I don't have anything to add. I did put the conceptual drawings up of the garden. I don't have, I don't have the buildings up here, but I do have this. So I put this up here for everybody to see. And Patrick is here, and I believe the applicant's here as well, if there are questions.
Thank you. Summer, do you have anything to add for the planning commission?
Nothing to add.
Comments or questions on this one?
Looks nice.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion passes. Thank you. Item G3, Consider Approving the Purchase of Fleet Vehicles and an Associated 2022 Budget Amendment.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of one 2022 Ford Explorer from Signature Ford utilizing state bid pricing of $34,652. And we have the bidding process and approve the purchase of three vehicles from the identified dealerships off the lot with the approval of the Township Supervisor, MSD Director, and Finance Director when a vehicle is available for an amount not to exceed $100,000 for two fire vehicles and $50,000 for one DPW vehicle, and to approve the attached amendment to the 2022 budget.
Question made by Clerk Seager, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Due to the unique circumstances currently in the automobile industry, the township is in limbo when it comes to fleet purchases. The automakers are not producing fleet vehicles and appears to be focusing all of their production on their retail business. We have had orders in place with approved POs that have been canceled by Ford Motor Company. We continue to search for a solution to purchase fleet vehicles that have been budgeted for, to replace existing vehicles as well as purchase vehicles for new positions that have been approved. MSD DPW Fleet Services Division has been working with department directors on their needs and would like to present the following solution to replace the remainder of the 2022 budgeted vehicles. We are requesting approval from the Board of Trustees to work with the following six dealerships that we have existing relationships with to purchase off the dealer lots with the approval of the Township Supervisor, MSD Director, and Finance Director when a vehicle is available and falls within the allocated dollars below. The township will continue to explore hybrid and electric vehicles as they become available if they fall within the not to exceed amount being requested. We will continue to work with these dealers and strive for state of the Michigan bid pricing, but this request would waive the bidding process that is spelled out in the purchasing policy. With the Board of Trustees' approval of this RBA, fleet services can purchase vehicles as they become available without the usual delays of individual RBA approvals and subsequent loss of the vehicle to another buyer. The dealerships that are being proposed to work with are Village Ford Address listed, Atchison Ford Address listed, Blackwell Ford, Signature Ford, Gorno Ford, Todd Wedsall GMC. The following vehicles have been identified as purchases under the above proposal. Fire Department, two vehicles, F-150 not to exceed 50,000, Explorer not to exceed 50,000, or Escape not to exceed 40,000. DPW, one vehicle Ford Explorer not to exceed 50,000. These may be replaced with other vehicle makes but would be equivalent, and dollars will stay the same. Under the state bid, the Police Department is requesting to purchase one 2022 Ford Explorer from Signature Ford to be used in police administration in the amount of $34,652. This vehicle is immediately available as it is being purchased off the dealer's lot. The Department is also requesting an amendment to the 2022 police budget for this expense. Director Smith, do you want to add anything?
That pretty much sums it up. I just wanted to, again, address how unique this request is and kind of out of the box thinking that we're doing to, to make sure that we are successfully fulfilling our fleet and keeping our fleet at the highest standard that has been come to, be expected and can. In regards to the Explorer for the DPW, that was previously approved by the board. There was an RBA taken and approved about a month and a half ago. PO was entered, and we received a letter from Ford Motor Company about two weeks ago that actually withdrew that and said they were not going to be honoring any of their 2022 fleet orders. And they also, in the same letter, told us that there would be a $9,000 price increase for 2023 and to get on the next waiting list. So it seems like every time we turn around and we try and accomplish purchasing vehicles, we run into some roadblocks. So working with the rest of the directors and our fleet services and Public Works, this was our, our next best solution. We have relationships with all six of these dealerships. And if this does work, and I've talked with Director Trumbull and the supervisor, if this works for the rest of the 2022 fleet, and we run into the same issues in 2023, we may be back before you requesting a very similar request in '23 to continue our, our fleet replacement after we go through the analysis for 2023. Other than that, I'm open for any questions.
In addition to what Jade is saying, is that, you know, we are looking at all of our vehicles right now in terms of how we replace them and when they're needed and when they come up, and can we hold on to something if we have to. But the lines of the dealerships are very long. I mean, there's, just for personal vehicles, if you want, you know, people have told me there's 50 ahead of them. So we have to jump on vehicles when we can, but it's a very interesting situation that we're all in right now with the cheap shortage and...
And I think their request to do it this way is if we do see a vehicle on a lot, if we say, oh yeah, we want to, we want to purchase that vehicle, and then I wait two weeks to bring an RBA before the board, they're not going to hold it for us, because everything's in such high demand. So this allows us to still have some controls with, with those types of approvals in, in this process, and I hope it works. And we will still focus on hybrid and electric vehicles too, if they're available. But again, at this point, I'm not so sure that they are. But we will continue to work with these dealerships on, on that if the board approves us.
Questions or comments?
I'm just relieved, because when I heard out of box thinking, I thought they were going to recommend that trustees drive employees around the township.
That was the other option, so.
I mean, I'll drive Chris around. I mean, I'm fine with that.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion passes. Item G4, Consider Site Plan for Hagerty III Light Industrial Building.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move that the board approve the following resolution, the approval of Site Plan for Hagerty III Warehousing and Materials Distribution Center uses. Whereas project sponsor has requested site plan approval for warehousing and materials distribution center uses on the subject tax parcel on the south side of Hagerty Circle, and whereas Planning Commission reviewed the site plan application and applicable criteria, voted eight to zero to recommend approval with conditions as the request meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees, the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, hereby approve the site plan and planning application number listed for warehousing and materials distribution center uses on the subject tax parcel, subject to compliance with all state, county, and township requirements.
Question made by Clerk Seager, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The project sponsor proposes to construct two 37,147 square foot two-story speculative use industrial buildings in the Hagerty II Corporate Park. The site is located on the south side of Hagerty Circle, which is located north of Michigan Avenue, west of Hagerty Road, and north of the Rouge River. The subject site is zoned LIR, Light Industrial Research, which allows warehousing and material distribution centers via special land use. Special land use for warehousing and material distribution was previously approved for the subject site. At its meeting on October 3, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended approval of that site plan, subject to conditions. If the site plan is approved, the next step will be for the applicant to submit plans to the Engineering Services Division and Building and Inspection Services Division for review prior to construction. Jade, do you have anything to add to that?
I do not.
Questions from the board or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion passes. Item G5, Consider Request to Approve Letter of Agreement Between Canton Township and the Canton Command Officers Association, POLC Union.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the LOA between Canton Township and the CCOA POLC Union to allow for promotion of two bargaining unit members to the rank of captain in the calendar year 2022.
Support.
Supported by trustee Snyderman. Canton Township is always striving for good rapport with its labor force. Toward this end, a letter of agreement was reached between Canton Township and the CCOA POLC Union, Canton Command Officers Association, POLC Union, to recognize the promotions of two bargaining unit members to the rank of captain in the calendar year 2022. Director Bow or Deputy Supervisor, do you have anything to add?
Consideration for the Police Department, this allows for not only certification of our rank structure, but also succession planning to get things started. This, this move here actually moves nine people, because two captains, two lieutenants, two sergeants, and three special assignments within the organization. So that will start very soon.
Jennifer, you'll recall, the labor agreement that the board recently approved with the CCOA provided for these new, two, two new positions within the bargaining unit. And Director Bow approached myself and the Township Supervisor, asking to handle those promotions within the calendar year of 2022 for those two officers that are being promoted to the rank of captain. And we thought it was a, a good idea to take that step now. So we put together the letter of agreement, and it's before you for consideration.
Questions or comments? Good work on this. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Great, motion passes. Item G6, Consider Approving Payment to Schoolcraft College for Three Police Academy Sponsorships in 2021 and Associate Amendment to the 2022 Police Budget.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve payment to Schoolcraft College for three police academy sponsorships in 2021 in the amount of $20,000, $20,846.94, and to approve the attached listed amendment to the 2022 police budget. to the 2022 police budget.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. In 2021, the Police Department sponsored three candidates to the Wayne County Regional Police Academy hosted by Schoolcraft College. Department was recently contacted by the college stating the invoice is outstanding and they are requesting payment of $20,846.94. No late fees assessed. Department is also requesting an amendment to the 2022 police budget to accommodate this expense. Director Bow, do you want to add anything?
Like the RBA states, this is a mispayment. What it doesn't say, the three employees, or one came from our dispatch center, two came from our PSA program, which has become a feeder for our Police Department. So worked with Wendy last year, she caught a way that this wouldn't happen again, so our Training Division should be able to catch it from now on.
Comments or questions? Summer?
I have a question, not necessarily related to this RBA specifically, but for candidate or for people that we sponsor and going through the Police Academy, do we require them to serve a certain number of years with Canton Police Department?
Interesting question. We're looking at that right currently with the Deputy Supervisor because there is some case law of the Supreme Court of State of Michigan that might be in conflict with that idea.
Okay, thank you.
Or do you want to comment on that or anything?
It's currently under review.
Yeah, there you go. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Item G7, request approval to purchase DocuSign services.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the creation of a purchase order to CDW Government for the purchase of solutions and services for the DocuSign Electronic Signature and Contract Lifecycle Management Solution in amount not to exceed $15,709 and to approve the budget adjustment attached.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The Township Supervisor has directed the Legal Department to better track and monitor all contracts between the Township and external parties. To do this, it was determined that electronic signature functionality along with contact lifecycle management capabilities were needed. The ITI Department in partnership with other internal departments contacted the DocuSign and reviewed their product offerings, which were determined would address the needs indicated. Victor, would you like to comment on that?
After reviewing the workflow that is required, we do believe that DocuSign will help us streamline the process as requested by the Supervisor's Office.
Any comments or questions? No? Steve?
Thank you, Director Abegbo. I was wondering, we don't have any electronic signing capabilities today in the township?
Not at the moment.
Moment. And once we have this, is this something that could be extended to interactions with the public, like at the Treasurer's Office or the Clerk's Office or something like that, in terms of electronic signing and things like that?
Yes, within reason. Yes.
Sometimes we sign a PDF with the tools that are in the PDF, but...
Oh, okay. Oh, you do already, you mean?
Yeah, that way for some, but most of it is hand signing.
Yeah.
Question?
So I'm just, I have some questions about where, so this is document storage and signing?
It basically allows the workflow to move up the chain, and then you can route the final document to whatever repository you want it to go to.
Like in the G Drive or in the cloud or?
Anywhere you want it to go to, you can then route it.
So do we have an end run location where we will have the documents stored?
Currently, we have a repository for documents today that is called OnBase. That platform can actually handle all that we proposing to use it for.
Is OnBase the solution that we would be using in the future for all document retention going forward?
As you may recall, we are still reviewing everything that we have in the township today. While OnBase gives us an opportunity to do great things, if I may say so, there are other tools that are there as well that we are reviewing. And we're not quite sure how we will settle because we are reviewing every workflow. The one that works best for every, for the need that we are applying it to is what we are going to use. Yes, OnBase is, OnBase is in the front run of the whole thing at the moment.
All right, excellent. So if a FOIA comes in for one of these documents, who would be the individual responsible for retrieving this?
Because OnBase is a platform, individuals or staff can be given rights to be able to log in based on what they've been assigned to do. And so they can basically go in, search for the document they are looking for, and retrieve it for whatever purpose they need it for.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Director Abegbo. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Item G8, consider approval of a 2023 purchase in 2022 for fertilizer, plant protectants, and nutrients for the Pheasant Run Golf Club and Parks.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to waive the bidding process and approve the purchase of 2023 seasonal seasons fertilizers, fungicides, plant protectants, and nutrients for the Pheasant Run Golf Club and Parks Division in 2022 for a total amount of $131,000 to be paid for the 2023 budget.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Due to the anticipated increase in cost and lack of availability, the Leisure Services Department is recommending to take advantage of the early order rebate program that is being offered for fertilizer, fungicide, plant protectant, and nutrients at Pheasant Run Golf Club and Parks. This program allows Canton to purchase and receive materials in 2022 but not pay until 2023, allowing Canton to save approximately 10 to 20% depending on the product and guarantee to receive the product. These purchases against the township will be for multiple products made with multiple purchases, and the quantity of products is unknown because they are weather dependent. Therefore, Canton Leisure Services is recommending to waive the bidding process and approve the following purchases to be made in 2022 for 2023 seasons fertilizers, fungicides, plant protectants, and nutrients for the Pheasant Run Golf Club and Parks Division in a total amount of $131,000 to ensure a better rate and guaranteed delivery. These blanket purchase orders will be included in the 2023 blanket order request RBA in 2023. The following funds will be expensed from the 2023 budget. Well, we have various account numbers, Advanced Turf Solutions, Harrows LLC, Site One Landscape, Site One Landscape, and Nutrien AG Solutions, account numbers as listed. Director Homberger, do you want to add anything?
2022 or, well, 2021 for the 2022 season was the first time that we did this purchase where we purchased in the fall of 2021, proved to be very effective for us considering these products are petroleum-based and made us look very good because as we know, 2022 petroleum products went sky high, so we were able to save a fair amount of money by purchasing them in advance, so we're looking to do that again this year, securing the products at this year's rates and also be able to secure the products to protect us from any supply chain issues that may occur next year. So it worked out very well for us this year, so we're looking to continue it.
Any questions or comments? No? No, thank you. All those in support of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is public comment, general public comment. Let me see, we have three attendees. Let's look online first. Does anyone online want to raise their hand and give any public comment? Public comment? Public comment? No? Okay, how about in the room? Anybody public comment? Okay, please go to the podium. Three minutes, the Board will take what you're saying into consideration, and we can comment perhaps on the Board Comment section.
Michael Schultz, 44580, Deon Street. Kind of missing a debate right now, which I didn't want to do, but can't help it. First thing on the agenda was Joe Biden. This body doesn't have anything to do with that, but just some things that come to mind. Afghanistan, hundred of millions of dollars, 8% inflation, $2.1 trillion is what's been lost out of this economy. That's my investments. I don't know if you guys got a special deal where you don't lose money, but I have. The stock market was $36,000 when he came in. Last week it was $29,000. That's a lot of stocks. Now, Whitmer, 8,000 deaths, nobody brings that up. Thousands of businesses shut down, nobody brings that up. The chip factory went to Ohio. Lot of families lost stuff. Proposal two, no ID. That's a clerk's dream. You've got to have a picture to get in the Democratic National Convention. Simple thing, you got to have a picture to do anything. A lot of room for fraud. Proposal three, I don't like to see any life get sacrificed, especially a young minor children that don't have to have their parents' permission to go get an abortion. I don't like abortion at nine months where a kid can be born live and somebody asks to kill it. Don't like that at all. That stuff not being performed by doctors, you're losing a lot of things. If you don't want to get pregnant, don't have any casual sex. Very, very simple. Alyssa Slotkin, interesting that their, the parents owned high-grade meats and the mother didn't have insurance, that doesn't make any sense. Secretary of State, there's 30,000-plus people that are dead, that's according to Social Security rules, and she won't modify the thing. The Attorney General was not willing to enforce the law. She's not the only person. Last week I was talking to Rick Hamill, he's the Township Supervisor in Highland. It's kind of a little community, but that's where I grew up, White Lake and Highland. I always look at this thing and I make a comment on it more than once. I pay 450 bucks for my administration fee. I've got a small house, so I think the houses that are worth more would pay more. I don't know if it's the same for everybody, but I talked to some of my friends, they pay more. When I talked to Pat Williams a few years ago, he said there was 28,000 single-family residences. I don't know if that's an accurate figure or not.
Thank you, thank you. We have time.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Everybody have a nice Halloween.
Anyone else in the room want to comment? Go ahead to front room, please.
Diane Rushlow.
Hold the microphone, please. Thank you.
Diane Rushlow, and I was coming, I saw an article in Observer about the site plan for Hagerty Road and Michigan Avenue, and I was very concerned about that because I am a member of the Friends of the Rouge, and I do the, I volunteer to do the frog and toad monitoring. And in that area, you know, there's a permanent pond, and then in back the ponds is a scrub shrub area, and there are four species of frogs and the American toad reside in that area. That's their habitat. So I wasn't sure, I was trying to find out where exactly these buildings are. They going to put them on where this pond is and the scrub shrub or another part of that parcel?
We can get you that information.
Huh?
We can get you that information.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? No? All right, thank you. Any comments from staff? Greg, go ahead.
We have the Trick or Treat Story Trail this Thursday night on the 27th from 4:00 to 9:00 in Heritage Park, so come on out and enjoy that. I believe you are manning or womaning one of the stations on Thursday night. And then we also have the Halloween Story Trail at the Village Arch Factory on the 29th from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. So come on out for either one of those events. And Revenge on Ridge is October 28th from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. So lots of Halloween events coming up this weekend, so come on out and enjoy one of those events or all of the events.
Great, thank you. Yeah, so like you said, we'll have some tables around, and some of us are going to be there handing out candy and other little toys for the kids. Thank you. Anyone else? Jade?
Thanks. I just wanted to update the Board on our pilot food composting program that we announced about four weeks ago, and we are up to over 600 volunteers as of today. So we are still taking applications for volunteers, but we will be communicating out to those residents here in the next couple of weeks and actually launching it on December 1st, where we actually have the waste buckets distributed to the homeowners and then also have the drop-off location. So I'll be sending an update and your guys' bi-weekly update, and that comes from the Supervisor's Office on that, but we are still looking for volunteers. Very happy with the success so far.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Chad?
One thing, the Police Transparency and Guidance Subcommittee, which is the oversight of the Police Department for use of force and bias complaints, we finished up last week with a series of bias-type complaints or citizen complaints. Next month, November, we're going to look at some use of force, and by the end of the year, the first week of January, the Board will have that report again for the Oversight Committee.
Thank you. Anyone else? Want to talk about your Fire Academy that the IAF Union had chief?
We just ran a board academy, and hopefully you guys enjoyed it. I could make it out, and I know a couple of you couldn't, but we appreciate the support. And I know that the firefighters had a great opportunity to show you what they do day in and day out, and I think that that opens up a lot of avenues for us to have great communication on, you know, what our needs are in the Fire Department. So it's appreciated that you guys came out and were able to spend the day with them, and I know I appreciated it too.
Great, it's a lot of fun, thank you. Got to see Canton from 100 feet in the air.
One more.
Oh, yes.
I want to encourage everybody to really, really be cautious about everything that we do, particularly this season. Cybersecurity activities are going up in terms of the trends that we are seeing. I know from now on going down to Christmas season, people shop online and we do all kind of stuff online. Just be very cautious about what you do. There's a targeted attempt going on right now towards government officials, and particularly as it relates to elections coming. So every official here, basically you can consider yourself as a target. We do our best to prevent what we can, but any little mistake can be very costly. So we want to make sure that we encourage everybody to be cautious what we do online, and, you know, just be careful out there.
All right, thank you. Any other directors or staff members? No? All right, next item on the agenda are the Board comments. Tanya, we'll start with you.
Happy Halloween the coming week. Lots of trick or treating opportunities, as Director Homberger said, and we had a really good time at the Fire Academy last Saturday. It was a lot, it was, it was a lot of fun, you know, doing things like using the jaws of life, but at the same time, we got to learn so many new things about our fire and EMS department that every firefighter there is, you know, is equipped to help with advanced life support, which is a big asset to the community. It makes Canton one of the most safe places to live in Michigan. And they showed us so many new things that they use to keep people alive and moving even when they have, you know, when they're, when they're doing life support and how they can, you know, how they want to make sure that the person is, you know, really able to walk and live a normal life after that. So I thought that was very, very, that's ours is the only community in Michigan that does that. you know, really able to walk and live a normal life after that. So I thought that was very, very, that's the ours is the only community in Michigan that does that. So thank you so much, Director Stockline and the firefighters.
Thanks, Summer.
No bummer that I missed the Fire Academy. I wasn't feeling well this weekend. Last week, we had a great meet and greet with the Planning Commission for the folks that are sitting on the Master Plan Advisory Committee. I'm really impressed and, you know, we have a great group of people that are going to be working on that project this year. So I think a lot of thought went into who was selected and we've got folks with great experience who really care about Canton Township. So excited to see that.
We have, we're two weeks away from the November election and we are looking at record record absentee ballot requests. One thing that is unique this year from previous years is that the rate of return is much slower than in years past. We are at about half as many ballots back as we have had at this point in the last two election cycles. So I would ask voters to research their candidates, obviously submit your ballot when you're done and you feel confident in your choice, but also don't wait to the last minute if you want to see election results anytime after the close of polls on election day. To try to make sure that you get those ballots back to us. Some things were said tonight about the elections process that I don't want to let go by because when things are stated and nobody says anything about them, that's giving tacit consent that that's the truth. And I think it's important that we clarify that. And so first and foremost, under Michigan law, you do need an ID to vote. If you do not have an ID, you can sign an affidavit on the back of your application to vote. 99.5% of voters show an ID to vote in Michigan and that is the same in Canton Township. We had 58,000 voters in the November 2020 election and only 112 people did not have an ID with them on election day. And I had six days to verify their signature to ensure that they were the correct people who presented themselves to vote. So feel confident that only qualified registered electors are able to cast a ballot in Canton Township. Additionally, we routinely compare the voter rolls to the social security death index. Every time somebody passes away, they are removed from the voter rolls, provided we can match three things. Their name, their date of birth, and the last four of their social security number. If we don't have those, all three of those, we do not remove a voter because the consequences of removing a voter erroneously, provided they don't have the same date of birth, but they do have the same name, i.e. son versus father, could mean that somebody loses their right to vote in an election. So we do follow the National Voter Registration Act in our list maintenance, but we do everything we possibly can to keep it up to date. And when people move or move out of state or pass away, we update it in real time.
Stephen?
Thank you. Everybody be safe on Halloween. Have a fun time on Monday night when you're out there. And just in case anybody's interested, Mounds bars are my favorite candy. So, you know, if you know where I live, I wouldn't mind having some dropped off. But also about 10 days ago, it was a beautiful day and I was able to take a ride on our trail system. And I was pleased to see that there's been some improvements out there. The trails have been cut back and some of the areas that were deteriorating have been fixed. So I think we still have some work to do, but it seems like we're making progress for those of us who walk or ride on our trails. It shows bringing the director and the deputy director out there and threatening to make them just keep biking for miles and miles really works. So I was glad to see that. So thank you.
Happy Diwali to everybody and I hope you had a, people have been enjoying their the nice weather, the nice fall weather. And a good reminder is Monday. I mean, you should always be cautious when driving, but we'll have lots of little ghosts and goblins running around Monday nights. So be extra cautious on the road.
They're not real. Don't worry about it. Thank you. So I just took some notes as everybody was talking through the meeting and again, thank you for the Fire Academy. That was really impressive. And then we're looking forward to Halloween at Heritage Park this week, as was said. So Amazon is opening its doors tomorrow at noon for ribbon cutting. So if anybody wants to come listen to speeches, it's on Michigan Avenue. It's going to be fun from noon to one o'clock. We're also going to be celebrating our therapeutic recreation program. That's coming up. What is the date of that? That's exact date?
Second.
The second, the second, November 2nd. So that's going to be at the summit. If anybody wants any information, can contact supervisor's office, but it's our disabled children and adults and they're going to do a demonstration of one of their programs. So please come to that. Also, so this young lady, so Patrick, I don't know if you can help her after the meeting. She was asking about the toads and let her know about the water. So Patrick's right here. Okay, thank you. Fireworks. So I've got a lot of emails and texts about fireworks this morning. So just to let everybody know, there's Diwali celebrations. Residents, if you can hear this, so it's really important to have permits when you have fireworks. And there's a state law and we have our local ordinance. So you cannot just put up fireworks anywhere you want. You have to basically have a permit, which we don't have any permits. The last permit we had was for last night, so we don't have any permits left for the rest of the, we haven't had any. So if you hear fireworks, I know a lot of residents have just said they can call public safety and public safety will go there and basically ask them to stop. So that's a lot of what I got yesterday. So please call public safety if you're concerned about fireworks you're hearing. Cybersecurity is Director Abegbu talked about, the MML conference. They talked about that a lot of smaller communities and communities are being basically ransomwared. So as Victor had said, it's very important to watch any emails that we open and know that any little crack in the system can let anything in. And the last one, so proposals. So the League of In voters, I'm just going to toot the League of In voters. They have a great info on candidates and proposals. It's online and people can just go and put your zip code in and read about the proposals and and the candidates. And there's great forums out there also. So please do that. Anything else? Any other board comments? Nope. Okay, great. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Support.
A motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by trustee Foster. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.